Wander back place, possibly. And all rise. Welcome councillors, acting CEO, directors and members of the public in the gallery with all to their honour and those viewing online. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. Councillor McPhee, the prayer please.
We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you. We see it. Apologies and leaves of absence, which I believe we have none. Excellent. Directors present, we are joined by Helen Morris, who is the acting director of corporate services, Svetlana Petkova, Heather Green and Bruce Myers and of course our acting CEO, Roseanne Cowal. And Kate Jewell, who is our development manager. Confirmation of minutes for the scheduled meeting of council have on the 21st of December 2021. May I have a move that they are true and correct? Councillor McPhee, seconded, councillor Moore. Do we have any disclosures of conflict of interest for any of the agenda items?
Um, I do. Um, item V 22.7, extension of appointment. Um, I just like the comment that we have two requests for leave of absence, I don't believe either of those are of conflict of interest.
Okay. Perfect, thank you very much. Joint letters and reading of petitions.
Um, we have none.
We have none, but for public question time, we do. Cowal.
Um, did you want to do the questions or would you like me to do them all?
Oh, usually it's the CEO that makes the questions. Oh, we need to suspend.
I'm moving the motion to a bit, what is, the standing orders.
And a second up, councillor Moore. All those in favour, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Jade, we have three questions. Um, the first is in regard to the activation of the Robinvale Hotel. Um, the question reads, council assembly agenda of 14 December 2021 included the item, Robinvale Hotel update. An article on page four of The Guardian, a Friday 17th December 2021, included words to the effect that council was working to activate the pub to get it developed. Can council advise what is being done to activate the pub? And the response is, the property is privately owned and it is understood that there are a number of prospective purchasers interested in purchasing and activating the site. Council continues to monitor the condition of the site and buildings very closely and we will consider any options as they emerge.
Shade sales for Robinvale Ritchie's IGA car park, an update was requested and provided at the meeting of 16th of November 2021. The update advised that on the 8th of November 2021, Ritchie's informed council that they had sourced one quote but were waiting for a second quote. Can council confirm that only two quotes are required and advise when the second quote, if not received, is expected? And lastly, can council advise when the community can expect construction of the shade sales to commence?
Procurement for local government requires works over a certain threshold to be tendered out. Depending on the value of the quotes, they may be sufficient. Um, council has received a written quote and only one from IGA of an amount above the tendering threshold. Um, no second quote has been received to date. In terms of the possible addition of shade sales on council's portion of the car park, there are no funds allocated in the major projects planned 2022-23 to 2031 to 32, which was of course recently adopted by council. Council would need to determine if and when it would support such a project in the future or reallocate funds from an existing project that would not proceed. It is understood that IGA intends to construct shade sales on their land, which may be sufficient. There are currently no public car parks within the municipality with shade sales.
And lastly, amendment to ease planning for rural worker accommodation. The intention of this amendment is welcomed, however, can council provide clarification on an issue relating to contiguous land and same ownership? Is the owner defined as a registered proprietor on the registered search statement certificate of title for the subject land? Can council advise how many owners, whether they be an individual, individuals, companies or companies acting as trustees of land located within original soldier settlement irrigation area, 246 blocks in Robinvale, are eligible to build work, build worker accommodation? And how many workers under the new definition would be able to be accommodated if eligible owners built accommodation for their workers? So a few questions in that one.
Thank you, Mayor Jade. Unfortunately, a significant body of work would need to be undertaken to answer all of these questions. And quite frankly, it would take our planners away from assessing planning applications. Uh, the following is a summary of the rules around worker accommodation. Uh, please also note that meeting these requirements means that no planning permit is required. Permits for vegetation removal, cultural heritage, waste disposal, building and access to a road would still be required. In addition, if a developer cannot meet all these requirements, a planning permit can be sought. For example, if accommodation for 30 people is needed, then a planning permit will be required. So the number of persons accommodated at any time must not be more than 10, that's the, um, that's what's allowed. Um, so the property owner can actually accommodate between one and 10 people. But if more than 10 people are considered, then a planning permit is required. Um, the accommodation must be used exclusively for accommodating, accommodating workers engaged on the same land or contiguous land in the same ownership. So this means that land ownership must be the same ownership details as shown on title, not a company name or a child or a parent's name. The third requirement must be the only accommodation other than a dwelling on the same land or contiguous land in the same ownership. Fourth requirement must be on the same lot as an existing dwelling. The fifth point, the lot must be at least the area specified in a schedule to this zone for which no permit is required to use the land for a dwelling. If no area is specified, the lot must be at least 40 hectares. Uh, please note that, um, Swan Hill Rural City Council irrigated land has a 20 hectare minimum and dry land has a 40 hectare. The final point, it must meet the requirements of clause 35.07-2, um, which is use of land for a dwelling. And I just note that this covers matters such as access, setbacks and waste disposal.
Thank you. May I have a motion to resume standing orders, please? Councillor Moore and seconding councillor Jeffrey. And there is no one in the gallery who have an open forum. Moving on to section B, reports, B 22.1, use and development of a dwelling in the farming zone affected by land subject to inundation overlay located at 27 River Road, Swan Hill. Miss Green, please.
Yes, you guys can just start and Kate is here for some more technical advice. Um, we have this morning received an email from the applicant requesting that this application be deferred to a future council meeting. However, I just wanted to, uh, just go through the process, um, involved in that. Um, council did have this, uh, item discussed at a December assembly where the applicant was invited to attend. Um, and then we had, uh, two of the three objectives being the authority, Slower Murray Water and Catchment Management Authority at a meeting only a week or two ago, where amongst other things, they did talk about, um, this application. So that has been our protocol. It's not a procedure, um, that we would have, we would normally invite the applicant and objectors to meet with council at an assembly. Um, again, it's a protocol, it's not a documented procedure, it is not legislation that we need to do that. Um, as councillors are well aware, applicants and objectors often lobby them independently, um, as part of the, the process which they're able to do. But I need to report to you that the applicant has asked for it to be deferred to a future council meeting, but hasn't said that there's more information he wishes to provide or anything like that. So council could legitimately consider this application and I guess I'm in your hands to see whether you want to defer it for another month.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor? Nicole?
Um.
Councillor King?
Yeah, yeah. What's the process for if we're having to defer it? Is it simple as moving that we defer it or?
It's laid on the table.
Someone would need to move to lay it on the table and we'd also need a sitter and have to be voted.
We don't have to lay it on, if we lay it on the table, we've got to have a report to bring it up the table. If no one moves a motion and nothing's done, just defer it.
It just defers.
Just defer it, everyone on the table as such.
That's what I asked, what the process was.
If no one actually moves a motion, the thing will have to enter in a month.
So if no one's happy to move a motion, are we happy to defer?
Just a call for, if no one moves a motion, that lapses, does that mean the permits withdrawn or?
No.
Cast us laps and just be brought up in next month maybe.
Um, I think council's intent would be clearer if, if that's what, if that's what intent was, that it be brought back in a month's time and a motion to that effect was put forward rather than just ignoring the report.
It just, sorry, uh, councillor McKay?
It's that, the applicant wanted it brought to the council meeting, not the council or that it's because of the refusal?
Sorry, sorry, say that again.
Was it the applicant, the applicant wanted it brought to the council meeting initially or the council because, because it was refused?
No, because it's a refusal, by, by practice, we always bring them to a council meeting.
And the, and the applicants would like it deferred for any period of time, did they specify?
They did not, um, they just, no, they did not.
Okay. Councillor King?
I'm happy to move a motion that it be deferred if that's acceptable procedurally, um, that it.
I think a motion to defer to a later meeting.
To a later meeting? I'm happy to support that. That, um, as per the request of the applicant, uh, that we defer this matter to a future meeting of council.
Terrific. We'll just. Uh, Nicole's going to second?
Yep.
Yep. Sorry, councillor McKay is going to second.
Um.
Councillor King, would you like to speak to the motion?
I don't think there's much to say other than that the applicant must have his or her reasons as to why they wish to defer this matter and I don't think there's any need for us as a council to deal with a matter that the applicant doesn't want us to deal with at this point in time. So, um, it doesn't affect us to, to just defer it for a future meeting of council, simple as that.
Councillor McKay?
Your turn. So.
Okay, all those in favour of deferring this report? Oh, sorry, speaking, yep.
William, Mr Mayor, um, look, just in relation to what Miss Green said, I think in the meantime, in the past, it's not legislated, it's not anything else. But whenever we have an objection to a planning application, there's always the applicant and the objectors come along at one assembly and talk to us both at the same time. And I think that's appropriate that we arrange that meeting prior to this. It's been done for every other time that I'm aware of, is by objections on place. And I think it's just fair to vote, fairness to both parties, that that is held. You know, they're done at an assembly coming up.
Councillor Moore?
I'd like to support the motion as well. Um, um, I think earlier, talking out there in the community, this morning, the applicant's only just found out that it's going to council late yesterday. So I think he's read the, obviously read the agenda, oh, righty, and the recommendations. So he will obviously be availing himself, he or his representative to come and talk this. So I fully support that motion.
Any other speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Or put it to a vote, all those in favour of deferring this report to a future meeting of council, pass. Item V 22.2, subdivision of land in the farming zone located at 210 Prince Road, Maraway. Miss Green, please.
I will hand over to Kate Jewell to walk you through this one.
Uh, thank you very much, Heather, Madam Mayor and councillors. Uh, this application is, um, in effect a repeat application of a matter that was dealt with by council on the 17th of August last year, um, at which time council was, um, resolved to refuse the application for a two lock subdivision, um, at the property at 210 Prince Road, Maraway. Um, the applicant has come back, um, in this instance, um, requiring, requesting that the application be reconsidered on, on grounds that a section 173 agreement is placed on the balance lot. Um, the effect of that section 173 agreement is to prevent construction of a dwelling on that balance lot. Um, councillors, what I'd say from a planning perspective, um, is that council has obviously determined, um, at the time of consideration that this proposal was, um, unacceptable, um, from a, um, in terms of planning practice, um, to effectively sterilise a parcel of land, which would happen, um, in this instance, if a dwelling, um, wasn't, um, allowed to be constructed, um, is, is certainly not, um, a desirable outcome. Um, and given that the proposed lot two is bounded, um, by roadway and by channel, um, the potential for that to be, um, included in surrounding allotments, um, is significantly reduced. So thus, we have a small parcel of land in the farming zone, uh, that not a lot could be do with, could be done with it. You could perhaps run a pony or two or something of the like. Um, but it is considered that it's a far superior outcome to retain, um, the lot in its, its current, um, configuration being just a little over, uh, three hectares of land. And, um, I'm happy to take further questions, any questions if required.
Thank you, Miss Jewell. Questions, councillors? Councillor King?
Yeah, thank you, um, and thanks for the report. Is, is the applicant given any reason other than requesting the section 173, any, any specific reason for that? Okay, thanks.
Councillor Moore?
Miss Jewell, the, you mentioned the minimum lot sizes for both farming zone and irrigated zone. Uh, this is farming zone dry land, so the minimum lot size is 100 hectares. We have the option of an excision.
This is a household excision, which is governed under a different permission, yes.
Yep, yep. Um, in the notes here somewhere, it mentions a buffer zone of trees, uh, in relation to a map, but there is no map included with the buffer zone on it.
No, we, we have that as a condition on purpose that was going to proceed.
Okay, it's a condition, but it's actually hasn't been drawn up as yet. Okay, yeah.
Any other questions, councillors? If not, could I have a move? Councillor Kay?
Uh, in the, in the zone, in that immediate area, there are a variety of small lots, is that correct?
It's a mixture of allotments, um, particularly given the nature of the land use surrounding there. So there are some smaller, but when I say smaller, not, not to the extent of this size, no. But there is, there is, um, on the other hand, large land holdings typically associated with that part of the world.
Yep.
Miss Green, you have something further to add?
If that's a okay, Mayor. Um, I just want to reiterate what Kate has said around, council did refuse this application less than six months ago for good reason. Putting a 173 agreement on a vacant lot that no house can be built. I'm not sure what it achieves and I'm not sure what, um, the applicant is trying to do in terms of future development of that site. Um, so I guess I'd just stress what Kate has stressed to be wary about considering an approval of a subdivision of two, one and a, one and a bit hectare lots right in the middle of that farming area.
Thank you, councillor Moore?
Um, I know we've discussed this many a time, um, how enforceable is the 173? Is it likely, if it got over the line here, um, in five years' time, when all the staff have turned over and everybody's forgotten and it's probably still on the title, eh?
Yes, remains unaddressed.
Um, that can then come back to council.
Take it off.
And take it off.
Thank you.
So, um, whatever we do here today, uh, like if we did grant this, um, this by no means, means in two and a half years' time when the council makes changes, it could come back and the person who's bought it, whether he's going to build a house there, it's probably, so that's what the intention is all along, really. Um, so, um, so it's quite clear then, we can apply it, but it doesn't preclude a building on there to further date because council changes and the person can just come back and say, oh, I want the 173 removed, if there's enough numbers in council.
There's a potential.
Potential for that to happen, yeah, okay.
Councillor McKay?
Um, with the changes to our, uh, planning scheme, is that the correct way to say it, that has happened? Uh, is it correct to say that these types of decisions won't even come to council in the future? So, um, subdivisions of this nature?
These, um, through you, Madam Mayor, they still, um, will come because they're a household excision. But this is a different situation than if the two. than if the two allotments were, um, were vacant. So it's the, the ones that are vacant, um, they won't, they, they just can't be considered if they're underneath those thresholds.
Okay, so this one can't, will, this type could come to us as an excision of, um,
Just as.
The household block from the other, separating the block.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to move a motion.
Councillor McKay.
Um, I'd like to move, um, sorry, that the council granted permit for the subdivision of land in the farming zone at number two ten Prince Road, Maraway, subject to conditions and in accordance with the indoor plans.
Do we have a second before that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconding councillor Young. Councillor McKay, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, at the previous council meeting, I think I, I spoke in favour of this subdivision, although I didn't quite achieve it. Um, I think that we have, uh, in all our planning decisions that we come to, we look at each, um, situation geographically as to where it is. And I think this particular lot will not be, it's possible that in the long-term future, being close to the town and given that it is separated from other agricultural land and other big lots, will probably not be of great agricultural use. In our municipality, we do not suffer from a lack of agricultural land. In fact, farming land areas are getting bigger, we do need more housing. And if these applicants want to take, um, uh, take, take their chances on a council in the future and the changes to the town schemes, then I'm in favour of this subdivision. It's going to be protected, uh, for the foreseeable future from, um, unnecessary development. However, it does give the option of that future, that possibility in the future. I don't think it at all, although the state laws, as I remember councillor Young said in the previous meeting, are dictating our planning to an extent. Um, I think we all understand our area, uh, possibly a bit better than the, the state laws, how they dictate it. And, um, that farmland, farms need to be very, uh, getting larger and larger. And we have horticulture developing out in the dryland areas where there's vast areas of land. And it's not the lack of availability of land that's, um, holding back, uh, increase in farming. And we have, our farming, um, enterprises are increasing in size, um, and turnover all the time. So I don't see any, uh, problem with supporting this application. Thank you.
Councillor Young, would you like to speak to the motion?
Um, yes, my view last time was that, um, I believe that, um, they should have the opportunity to build a house on it at some stage. Because the, uh, Marygold Water said they had no plans in the future to pipe the channel. And I couldn't see how a farming person would want to buy that bit of land to add to an adjoining area of land. So I, I think we should leave it so that at some point in time, there can be an opportunity to build a house there, bird down the track. Um, so while I can see a one seven three could go on it at the moment, there's no reason why at some point in the future it couldn't be taken off.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Councillor King.
Thank you, I'll speak against the motion. Um, I think it's pretty widely known that generally, um, I'm fairly pro-development, um, as a councillor. Um, however, I believe that the recommendation that we refuse this planning permit is correct on this occasion. Um, there, there's actually no development on this, on this lot. In fact, the section one seven three agreement will preclude development on this lot. So what's the actual purpose for creating this lot? Um, there, there is no, from what's presented, there is no purpose for, for creating this lot. Um, there's no new information in, in, within the planning permit. Um, what's the attraction of actually creating this lot? You can't develop on it. It just becomes a, a bare, uh, block of ground, uh, without a house. Uh, if, if the owners want to, uh, go down the path of, uh, potentially seeking a future council to approve this, well, they can do that. Um, down the track, we don't need to approve it now and then, uh, open it up for removal of the one seven three in the future. Um, basically, I guess the way I see it is if the, if the owners don't want responsibility for that parcel of land, then there's many other options available to them. They can section it off, they can lease it out, um, as a small lot, as is suggested for perhaps ponies or, or, um, um, something of the like. Uh, but I don't see any advantage, uh, in progressing with approving this, uh, planning permit. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Any other speakers against the motion? Councillor Moore.
Yes, I'd, I'd reiterate councillor King's sentiments in that there are plenty of options, both being farmers, there's lease options. Someone might lease it and grow sunflowers there, that's only flavour of the month at the moment, uh, not close to the town. Um, there could be a business set up there, um, plenty of options. And I'm, I think in the long term, this is a highly marketable parcel of land as it is. Like, someone is going to want that, and one of the things we don't have in this municipality is a varying supply, a, a, a different, a range of supply of different housing options. And this one here, if we split this in half, we reduce ourselves down. Um, and as councillor King said, we're pro-development, but we need to manage it in a strategic manner, that we don't, not plonking these little sort of enclaves in the middle of the farming zone. We only need one person that moves there and decides that they're going to save the world and shut down the farming and complain about the frostbans as we get. We know we all get the complaints about frostbans once a year. Someone's moved into the zone where they thought they were going to get a peaceful life and the frostbans start up. Um, and that, that, that's all you need to happen. I know it's, it's, it shouldn't happen, but I, I actually think this is a much more marketable, uh, property being whole than it is, and, um, and someone will want some professional person at some date, will want to move out there, have a few acres, run a tractor around or go kart cat track for the kids or something like that, I think, um, um, but that's why we need to go.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Any other speakers against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey.
Well, speaking against the, uh, the motion and the, the planning application, the, the one seven three doesn't change. Uh, the concerns that have been expressed around excising the house at the farming block. Uh, I get, the attack is probably for the owner, they want to retire from the land, they want to live in the house that they've made a home for twenty, thirty, fifty years, however long they've been there. But the next generation, if you're on that home, as councillor Moore said, they don't know what they're moving into. And then they could move it into a farming zone and might be impacted by there being, you know, frostbans or heavy use of chemical burning or farmers burning the produce of at night harvesting operations, uh, we just don't know what farming will do in the future, but that, that channel could go. It could be fifty years, um, we don't know when it could go, it may never go, but it is still smack bang in the middle of, uh, a farming area. And that is actively used for, for, uh, horticulture and farming practices, so it's a pro decision to grant it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers? Councillor McPhee.
I was going to say, Miss Mayor, um, look, planning, and I can understand what this person wants is a lifestyle block. But planning is about having lifestyle blocks in an orderly manner, not just scattered right through our agricultural areas. We're all for lifestyle blocks, that's what we're currently looking at through our, our, um, our, um, strategic plans at the moment, trying to establish those blocks. I think we've got to be very careful where and when we put them. We can't, look, it's close to town, but it's not ideal, it's not appropriate to subdivide this block off. Because we'll be inundated with other blocks of a similar size, coming to council saying, well, you let this one happen, why not me? So I think we've got to draw a line in the sand, now is the time to draw that line in the sand and say, this is not appropriate. Let's do it in an orderly manner into the future. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Right of reply?
Yes, um, look, I, I, you know, I acknowledge and understand the other councillor's point of view and it's, um, straight down the line with the planning regulations. However, um, the geographical position of that piece of land and the very small size of the block means that I can absolutely understand that. I think it's going to generate more economic activity in the future and be more suitable. Um, as to smaller lots, they're the size that are in the highest demand. And, um, I think there will be restrictions on, in our future about how many subdivisions we can do without that. And I don't think it'll cause an explosion, um, so I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll put the motion to grant a permit for the subdivision of land to a vote. All those in favour? All those against? Motion lapses. Councillor McPhee.
Move a motion as per the recommendation, Miss Mayor, in refusal to grant a permit.
Thank you. Can I have a second, uh, councillor Moore? Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak to that motion?
It's all been said, Miss Mayor, adding a one seven three to a previous objection from council, knocking at that, doesn't change the situation at all.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Councillor Moore.
It's all been said, thanks.
Thank you. So you don't wish to reply? Sorry, do we, do you have any other speakers for the motion? For this motion? Any other speakers against this motion? Then we'll take it to a vote. All those in favour of this motion?
Oh, no, sorry, I put my hand up at the wrong time.
All those against? Thank you. It passes. Terrific. Item B twenty-two point three, Swan Hill Regional Livestock Exchange Stakeholder Committee. Who's picked over, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so this report follows up from a previous decision of council to, um, establish a Swan Hill Regional Livestock Exchange Stakeholder Committee to provide diversity in use and assist council in decision-making to make sure that, um, the usage of the livestock exchange is to the best interest of all stakeholders. Um, this report has presented the draft terms of reference for such a committee. Um, and is, um, asking council or seeking council's approval for the terms of reference for, um, the commencement of the advertising process to, um, recruit external members and also, um, asking council to nominate a councillor to chair that committee. And I'm in your hands for questions.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? No questions. Councillor Jeffrey?
My question in terms of the councillor interested in chairing the committee is councillor Moore. Or, no, I was asking, I'm, sorry, no, sorry, I haven't got it outside, no, this has been an ask question.
Oh, right, no, I'm, I'm happy to do it, so, for the start.
Are the other councillors interested on? Just, we know that we're not an eight, so.
Are there any other councillors in? No. So councillor Moore, is it? Any other questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee.
Just in relation to that, does this become a committee like every twelve months we review it and whichever councillor may be nominated on it, can change it at that time?
Yes, I think it can review it every twelve months.
Councillor Moore.
Yeah, can, just, Miss Pecav, can you just fill us in on what the turnover that the livestock exchange is currently roughly? What it means to Swan Hill?
Oh, um, question without notice.
Sorry.
Um, so we, the, the turnover is, and I'm going on memory, um, about ten million dollars per year. Um, rough numbers, um, it's, every is different, obviously. Um, we are running a very clean business, so council is supporting the livestock exchange operations. Um, but in terms of, uh, it provides our local farmers of, um, a, a more economic way of, um, disposing of their livestock, and it also supports local businesses, including the abattoirs and the feedlots. So it is really a, a benefit for the community at large.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? I have a motion, please.
Oh, may I, as per the recommendation?
Thank you, councillor Moore, seconder?
Um, just point of order, I was about to say, can you nominate yourself as the, um, councillor, councillor Moore?
No, probably not, no.
Oh, may I?
Councillor McKay will move the motion as per the recommendation, nominating councillor Moore to chair the committee. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Jeffrey? Councillor McKay, would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. Um, the livestock exchange is an incredible centre of economic activity for our region, as councillor Moore has spoken of many times before. Um, it's a major economic driver and benefit to, um, livestock growers in our region and far, far beyond. Um, it is appropriate that we have, we've, uh, formulated new planning for the, the livestock exchange. And it's really appropriate that we have a committee where there can be good dialogue between council and the users. Um, and will hopefully lead to a great relationship and, uh, very mutually beneficial. Um, I certainly think councillor Moore is the most suitable person to be on that committee, uh, given that he is, he's the one of us, one amongst us who has used the livestock exchange, so he's got a great working knowledge. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Nothing further.
Anybody else would like to speak to the motion? Councillor Moore?
Can I?
Yes, you can speak, you just can't move it.
Um, yeah, look, the benefit, uh, this brings us into line with, uh, many other livestock exchanges throughout the state and indeed the country. Um, as councillor McKay said, this is a massive, um, economic drive for our town. It just brings livestock in from, we're bringing them in from down South, Karang, Bort, uh, Patchawalik, right through to Manindi, Broken Hill. The, the range is bigger and bigger now, um, so we're bringing, bringing people in, we're bringing livestock in. And with that, the farmers, uh, that come with them, spend their money in town, get things fixed here. So even though council might run at a slight loss or a slight profit every year, um, it's the economic driver throughout the town and the business attracts, which is, uh, most important to us. And, um, that was made quite clear in the redevelopment plans. And if we got that right, people would come here. The selling system was so important with our redevelopment, especially in the cattle yards there. So, no, and there's always needs to be a, um, a, where a sort of a disposal point, point of the sale of last resort or if you like, or uh, a, a place to sell small lots where, um, um, even though it seems to happen on the, you know, the online options. A lot of farmers just like to be able to be there, and they like to see their livestock sold that way. So, no, I, I thoroughly support the motion. Thank you.
Any other speakers for the motion? Any against? Councillor McKay, would you like to close?
No, it's fine, I've said everything.
All those in favour? Item B twenty-two point four, Council Plan Progress Report for the second quarter of twenty-one, twenty-two. Ms Morris, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor and councillors. Um, this report is an updated council's performance against the council plan for the reporting period of the first of October twenty twenty-one to the thirty-first of December twenty twenty-one. Um, the report itself offers a summary of the progress against the pillars, the newly selected pillars of livability, prosperity, harmony and leadership. And the intent of the report is to give the councillors and the community some confidence in how council is tracking against our, um, commitments over the full year period. Uh, the report lists a number of objectives that have been marked as complete and ongoing during that second quarter, along with a list of objectives that have been marked as progress having been made. Um, there is a number of, uh, obviously it's a large document, now I'll take it that everyone has read the document. Uh, the options for you councillors is to adopt the second quarter report as presented, or you may like to adopt the second quarter um, plan as, uh, with some amendments, and we are recommending that council do adopt the second quarter council plan progress report as it is presented. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, councillors? Councillor King.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks, Ms Doris, sorry, just, just for the, and just for, really, this is a question for the benefit, um, of the, of the public as opposed to myself personally. Um, can you just, um, outline the Tower Hill development, where it's at and, and what's coming up? Just for the benefit of the, of the public that might be watching the, the lives drain close.
Um, so currently, people will have seen, there is some progress happening out of Tower Hill, so stage thirteen. Um, we are towards the end of that project and we're just waiting on some, uh, some compliance, uh, audits from the lower moan border and power corp, which we're hoping to receive those within the next fortnight, and then we'll progress to titles. So, and that, that stage thirteen development has been solved. Um, we're also, um, in the progress of developing stage fourteen, and we anticipate we're probably still two months away from completion of that particular, um, part of the estate. And then once we get to that completed stage, we'll then apply for, for, um, titles. We may or may not, and the decision hasn't been made yet, whether we go out and sell before we receive the titles or not. Uh, but we do anticipate having someone for sale sometime in the mid-year, and that's for a twenty-five lot developing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Can I have a move then, councillors? Thank you.
May I have a recommendation?
And a seconder? Councillor Young. Councillor McKay, would you like to speak to motion?
Yeah, look, this is a report that comes to us quarterly, just to see how the, um, council's tracking against the council plan. It is a good document and it's an easy read, and what's pleasing to see that of all the objectives, there's only nineteen percent that we haven't started. So it's a great thing, only in the second quarter we've started most of what we want to achieve in this year, in this plan, so it's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Young.
I just want to congratulate the staff because I know it's been a really difficult year with all the Covid, um, activities and the different funding that come in. It must be difficult to be sort of moving things around and sorting out what the priorities are. So, yeah, I just want to, um, reiterate on what councillor McPhee said, and I suppose just congratulate the staff on the work they've done.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Any other speakers against the motion? Councillor McPhee, would you like to reply? All those in favour of the motion? Passed unanimously. Item B twenty-two point five, Public Transparency Policy. Miss Morris, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the public transparency policy that has been active and operational since August twenty twenty. The release of the Local Government Act required us to have developed a public transparency policy. It specifies how council's information can be made publicly available. There are some limitations on that, and that is council wouldn't disclose information that's confidential by virtue of this act or any other act. Or it may also withhold information where public availability of the information would be contrary to public interest. There has only been some minor changes to the actual document itself. There's been some minor wording changes and some, and insert of an appendix page, which you'll see outlined on page eighteen, which will make it easier for the community to understand what types of information they may be able to apply for. There was also a public interest test, which was in relation, or public interest test in relation to trying to explain how the community may access information. And it was sort of written around the threat of information raiding, which was really confusing. So we've tried to simplify that and make it a bit easier for the public. And this, so this council's been through the executive leadership team and their options for you councillors today is to either adopt the policy as presented, or you may adopt it with some amendments. And we are recommending today that council adopt the public transparency policy as presented.
Thank you. Questions councillors? No questions? Can I have a motion? Councillor McPhee? As per the recommendation?
As per the recommendation, yes ma'am.
Can I have a second up? Councillor King? Would you like to speak to motion?
Yeah, it's interesting, Miss Mayor, that the, under the Local Government Act put in place by state government, they ask us to have a public transparency policy. I wonder if they'd do the same thing themselves.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee, councillor King?
I'll, I'll second what councillor McPhee just said, because one of the notes that I had written down for this was that transparency is incredibly important in all levels of government, not just in local government. But I think this is, this is, yeah, transparency is very important. It builds trust with the community, so that they can actually trust that we're, that we are doing things out in the open and not behind closed doors. Other than things that obviously require that level of confidentiality and protection. So it's just another, another way to demonstrate to the community that, that they can gain information that they, that they want to gain about our activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the recourse of a lot of anti-council people is, oh, what are they hiding? They're doing this and they're doing that without our knowledge and they've made secret agreements. This policy obviously makes it quite plain that we, you know, ninety-five percent of what we do is publicly available information. And, no, it's great that we've got it formalised and updated and we move forward in the good knowledge that ninety-five percent of what we do, the bit that's remaining is basically commercial in confidence and can't be disclosed.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Item B twenty-two point six, Social Media Policy and Procedure. Miss Morris again, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors. This report seeks a resolution to adopt the reviewed social media policy. Just to be back around, the social media policy was first developed in twenty thirteen, and it provides the guidance to both the staff and the councillors on appropriate use of social media, including content comment management, which is really important. There's been a number of minor changes listed there within the report for you to review. The continued use of social media will be sort of governed by the media unit, Community Engagement Media Unit, as it's now called. And it is a really important tool to help improve community participation and enable a better understanding of council's programmes and initiatives. So we're making the recommendation today that council adopt the attached social media policy and procedure.
Questions councillors? No questions? Can I have a motion then councillors?
Oh, may I ask for the recommendation?
Thank you councillor Jeffrey, second up. Councillor McPhee? Would you like to speak to motion councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly an important policy and position to have in terms of guidelines of council and councillors with the community, as well as a platform for council to put out what we do in a realm or world that people are highly engaged in. And I think the couple of changes that have been made are fairly reasonable. Over, over concern, over concern, or whatever the word is I'm trying to say. Yeah, I think it's fair, that's what I think it is.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks, Miss Mayor. Look, social media is an ever growing area of society. And it's about, it's important that we do maintain a social media presence, because it's how we communicate with a lot of the people within our municipality. Not everyone reads papers, not everyone listens to radios. We've got to be progressive in how we communicate with all our constituents, is an important part, but it's got to be used for good, not evil, as Matt Ross Martin would say.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Put it to a vote, all those in favour? Asked unanimously. Miss Carver will leave the room for item B twenty-two point seven. The form, Miss Morris, presents.
Councillors, as you're all aware, at the unscheduled meeting in November, council approved Roseanne Carver to act as the acting chief executive officer until such time that we reviewed her appoint a CEO. And that was to be reviewed on a three monthly basis, and that three months is now due and up for your consideration. Council has some options. They may choose to continue with Miss Carver's appointment as the acting chief executive officer for a further three months, or until such time as the CEO is permanently appointed. Or they may also consider choosing someone else to that position. Obviously, that may come with some financial implications, as we would have to go through another recruiting process. We are making the recommendations to you today that council appoint Miss Roseanne Carver or another person to continue in that role of acting chief executive officer until such time as a permanent chief executive officer is appointed.
Questions councillors? Yes.
We are very much in the process of actively, inactive recruitment, aren't we?
We are. Yes, we certainly are.
So efforts are ongoing and highly active.
Any other questions councillors?
I'll move the motion. Do we appoint Roseanne Carver to continue in the role of appointing new CEO?
Second up councillor Jeffrey, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, I think it's been very fortunate that we've had Benavur appoint Miss Carver as the acting CEO at the time. Her knowledge of local government and the area has been great, and she's been doing a terrific job with difficult times with the staff we've had. We've had quite a loss of staff in different areas of the organisation, but things keep going on. Well, the earlier report, our quarterly report, that the organisation is still humming along with her in the chair. And as councillor McKay asked a question, we are actively in the process and moved along. The advertisements have already gone out, and we will be looking into the near future to appoint a permanent CEO. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Jeffrey? No further replies needed. All those in favour? Asked unanimously. Someone? Fit the role? Sorry? Good for her to walk.
Yeah.
We will wait for her to return before we can move on to the next item. Asked unanimously is the outcome of that motion?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item B twenty-two point eight, Application of the Twenty One Twenty Two Rate Circus, Miss Morris and Mr Pree, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors. This report is seeking a resolution of council for the application of surplus funds derived from the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one financial year as a result of Covid nineteen impacts and government stimulus initiatives that council received in that time. We had our financial statements reviewed in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and we received a better than expected result. And that result was discussed at the October council assembly. The two million dollar surplus is the rate determination result, which the original budget was prepared based on a fifty-six thousand dollar rate surplus, and the actual result was two million and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. And I'm just now going to explain how, or a breakdown of that figure. A significant portion of that surplus being eight hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars was derived from facilities that were closed and other business restrictions imposed on council by the state government due to the pandemic. There was also economic stimulus grants to assist with the pandemic that we received during the year, and the largest of that payment in the Work For Victoria program. Where we were able to employ forty-seven point one full-time staff, mostly engaged as temporary staff through an employment agency, but that did inject one point eight million dollars into our operational budget. There was also savings, three percent of employee costs, which was a result of being able to engage some of our stood-down staff, so eight point two E F T, under that Working For Victoria program. And that resulted in a four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar savings, and then there were further stand-down savings and delays in recruitment at that time, which resulted in a figure of two hundred and sixty thousand. There was also additional income that we received during that time from building permits due to that stimulus grant of the first home loaners grant. And then there was also a number of areas where we did actually have reduced income, such as hire and leasing, which resulted in two hundred and six thousand dollars. There were changes in building and property management staff, which resulted in an underspend of a hundred and eighty-five thousand million program building maintenance and vandalism. There's also seven hundred and sixty thousand in outstanding grants to fund expenditure incurred during the year, and the money was expected in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two financial year. So officers had considered this surplus and made recommendations through council assembly, and the recommendations were that, at the time, was that six hundred thousand dollars be utilized with the waste management reserve cell replacement. So we had some preliminary estimates provided of around six point five million dollars to cater for the expected construction of the cells and capping works out at our landfill. We currently have four point two million dollars, so we are asking for an additional six thousand dollars to be paid into that reserve. The next item was seven hundred and sixty thousand to be paid or to be utilized by the data and the I C T strategy implementation. So we have had consultancy reports in relation to that project, which it does state in this report, it will be delivered over three years, but we are determining that it will most likely be delivered over a four-year period. And in order for us to actually kick that project off, which will result in inefficiencies right across the organisation and have an impact on our community as well. And we are hoping to, that you allocate seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards that. Item number three was six hundred thousand dollars required for the liability, which is council's share of the work care scheme rolling up the M A V scheme. Our liability has been determined to be nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We have got a reserve already in place of three hundred and five thousand. And we're seeking that this additional six hundred thousand dollars of rate surplus to be used to make that unexpected liability. And then the fourth item is an additional planning officer, so we have had some reduction in staff or staff resignations, which has resulted in a backlog plus additional work as a result of those stimulus packages. And we're requesting for a short-term additional planning resource to try and get us through that backlog, which again will have an impact on the community. So we're hoping that council will consider these recommendations that were discussed previously, and you may choose to adopt or amend those recommendations. But our, our recommendation is that council do note the report presented to them and approve the surplus in the following areas. Six hundred thousand in the waste management reserve cell replacement program, seven hundred and sixty thousand in the data and the I T C strategy implementation project, six hundred thousand into the M A V work care liability payment, and ninety thousand dollars additional planning resources. Any questions councillors?
Questions councillors? Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, just, um, in terms of the data on I C T strategy, we spoke this morning about this, can you just let councillor Alber, because we actually haven't adopted this yet.
Yeah.
But we're putting seven hundred or sixty there, and there's two point three million dollars over. I just wanted to get an idea of where we're at with that, before we go spend the money on implementing something that we haven't got.
Yeah. So the, the project itself has been mapped out and council did engage an external consultant to come in and do a review for us. And that was approved by the previous CEO and director of corporate services. Now, that project is basically separated into Horizon one and Horizon two. We're anticipating that Horizon one will take about two years to implement, and then Horizon two will take about another one to two years, more likely two years, to implement. And that, that's looking at, that's looked at what areas within our organisation can we improve in relation to efficiency, program systems, suggestions. And it is a suggested draft strategy that the consultant has provided to us, which is yet to go through E L T. So Warren has got that listed for E L T on the twenty first of February. And that draft strategy will go through E L T, and then at some stage beyond that, it will come to council for your information. So there's still a lot of work to be done internally in relation to the consultants' made recommendations, but there's still a lot of internal consultation. That will occur over a number of months with existing staff to identify, the consultants will put up a system and say, this is where we think you need to go. But the staff themselves have to work through what exactly they need within their work areas to make their jobs work, and also so that we're not sort of going in there with systems that may not work for their job roles. So there's still a lot of engagement to happen, and it is a four-year, we're anticipating a way to four-year project. Seven hundred and sixty thousand is to kick start the project.
Any other questions councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thank you, Phe. First off, in relation to the landfill, like you're saying, it's likely to need a new cell within twelve to eighteen months. Obviously, by putting this money aside now, it's going to save us having to find that money in the future. And so that'll free up money in the future for other things in our major project plan, is that correct? And can you explain the third item, the M A V self-funded work care scheme? And why did we have three hundred and five thousand aside for it anyway, for a start? Did we think it was, there was an issue there? And is this just a one-off payment? Once this is paid, that's finished with?
So we had three hundred, so the three hundred and five thousand that's in reserve is actually a result of the scheme itself. We had, we had savings throughout that scheme, which we, our previous director, as you know, was very good financially and did, he has always put some money aside in a reserve for work cover. Because you never know from year to year what your premium payments may be, and that's, that's determined by the number of injuries and the severity of the injuries that's sustained from the workers. So we have always put aside some money to cater for those ebbs and flows of those premiums. And the program itself was rolled up with a, it's not a one-off, once-off, that is what we owe now, and then the program will be reviewed. So it's basically covering the tail end of all claims of the scheme. And it, there was a costing done now, which is nine hundred plus thousand, and it'll be reviewed again in year six of the, it's a seven-year window that they have. So there's been the initial review and there'll be a secondary review. Now, at that secondary review, we may or may not have to pay more. We may actually be paid some back from the scheme, depending on how they manage those tail end claims from the scheme lining up.
Any other questions councillors? Can I have a motion then?
I'll move it as recommended.
Thank you councillor McKay. Seconded councillor Moore, would you like to speak to motion councillor McKay?
Yes. I think that these are very prudent moves. They're looking at things which are difficult to access any other way of funding. They will improve our budget and Swan, Swan Hill's big positive of our council is that we've stayed in a good financial position. And it hopefully will allow us to do other more exciting projects in the next, in the coming years. And it's great to, I suppose, keep ahead of the game and keep moving forward. And it's great to, I suppose, keep ahead of the game and keep moving forward and making sure that we're covering our needs. And they're sort of infrastructure needs in a way, most of these. Thank you.
Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I've long believed that the, well firstly, I'll say prudent use of funds. Waste management reserve, um we have long thought that there's just not enough money in net to build a cell. So I've shifted a little bit of dirt, not as much as some, but I always looked at that and thought it's not enough there. I'm glad that's been confirmed and we're putting aside the resources to do that when we eventually get there to have to go do another cell. The data and I C T strategy implementation, that's just going to lead to much more efficient operations. And as we grow as a municipality and a council, we'll need this in the future years. The M A V work cover liability payment really gets my back up. This was actually a takeover by work cover, uh work, yeah, work cover, I think it is. And as far as I said, this is just a cash grab, winding a very efficient operation up, basically to prop up their books. The nine hundred and twenty four thousand liability at this point in time is basically a donation to to work cover and to prop them up. As far as I'm concerned, my own personal opinion, this should never have happened. The M A V work cover liability scheme, which was the twenty nine councils, rural councils were in it. Somewhere around that, ran a very efficient operation and a very good one and our premiums were were very affordable. So call this for what it is, I'm calling it a cash grab and we have to, you know, through no fault of our own, fund this almost million dollar payout and it could be more. Because they're they're sort of doing the books and telling us what we owe them. And we all know that liability, your premium, your annual premium is supposed to cover your liabilities today and into the future. And we're still going to be paying that as we go forward and this this disposable backlog. Number four, ninety thousand for additional planning resources, absolutely agree with them. We're in a growth phase and really look forward to that being implemented.
Thank you councillor Moore. Any other speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion, would you like to close councillor McKay?
No, I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? B twenty two point nine quarterly review of financial performance and financial position of thirty first of December twenty one. Miss Morris again, please.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. We've done a review of our financial performance and financial position for the six months from the thirty first of December twenty twenty one. And the results have been summarized in the report and I'm going to hand over to my brother colleague Ash Green to present those results to you.
Thank you, Helen. So presented our review of the financial performance for the six months ending the thirty first of December. As you can see on the report, we're reporting an unfavorable variance of four hundred and forty eight thousand, which is a significant turnaround from the three hundred and thirty one favorable variance we reported at the end of September. The significant movement here is the work cover scheme, which we've just spoken about. At the time when we did the September review, all the information we were able to gather at that time was that our liability was, might have been close to around three hundred thousand. So the nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollar result was a significant difference to what we reported at the time. So obviously that has a massive swing in our in our variance. And also this September review didn't have a great deal of information in it regarding the COVID effects. So since that time, we've had a roll on of closures and lockdowns and things like that. They're going to have a significant result on our end of year numbers. The income statement there will show some variances. The full year variance that we're reporting is our forecast for the rest of the year. So we've reported that there's a less income in car parking, for example. I think we reported about fifty thousand dollars. We're saying the full year result might be around a hundred and fifteen, so they're compounding as the year rolls on. We've got things like the pioneer cement admission and sales and indoor sports facility fees, which have obviously been affected by lockdowns and closures and lots of events and things like that. So that's having a significant impact on our result. And as mentioned in the previous report, also the building and planning fees, the increase in the movement in that or the activity in that area. Obviously, we've incurred some significant extra costs in that as well. So that's added into our impacting the results of budget. There are some favorables there, as reported probably in the previous quarter. We've got the Grants Commission, we've received additional funding there, those numbers haven't changed. However, we're still got some savings for the employee costs. Was mentioned earlier that there were some vacant positions and things like that, that's still happening. So there's savings in the employee costs while those positions are vacant. Some of that, however, is taken up by some temp staff if required in the roles, but that number still keeps climbing as the positions are vacant. Uh so, yeah, if you can just note that at this point in time, we're anticipating a four hundred and forty eight thousand dollar unfavorable variance of the budget. That's before any appropriation of the surplus funds as mentioned in the previous report. Now that we've got that towards the work cover levy, that will swing that number into a, well, a favorable position at this point in time.
Excellent. Questions councillors? Have questions? Can I have a motion? Councillor McPhee.
As per the recommendations, Mayor.
Thank you. Second up councillor Young, would you like to speak to the motion councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, fair. Look, it's been described like COVID's had a big impact. It has an impact on all levels of government, has an impact on but on businesses within our municipality. So everyone's taking a hit at this time because of that. And then on top of that, our work cover stuff, which we talked about, just the previous report was a big hit on us. But overall, I think budgets do fluctuate up and down. I still believe we are in a good financial position and look forward to the next quarterly report. Thank you.
Councillor Young.
No, I just agree with everything that's been said. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put it to a vote. You need to, yeah, to speak.
Oh, I'll add, congratulations. And as you did explain, Warren, that the budget will tip into surplus when those additional funds are reset. That's correct, isn't it? So overall, the situation is positive.
It's looking good.
Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Benham. Yeah, I think just well managed, the nine hundred and twenty four thousand, the cash grab from work cover. We've managed that, you've managed that very well with the surplus funds from the year before. A great job and yeah, just keep it coming. Balance in the books is very important.
Any other speakers for the motion, against the motion? Would you like to close councillor McPhee? Put it to a vote. All those in favor, last unanimously. Thank you. Item B twenty two point ten councillor candidate for the next federal election. I'll hand it to our acting CEO, Miss Carver. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Jane. Councillor King wrote to me indicating he'd been pre selected as a political party candidate for the federal election, for the electorate of Mallie. And foreshadowing that he would need a leave of absence from council. The the process is that once he's done that, he actually, it needs to be brought to council's attention at the next council meeting. And this is the first opportunity for councillor King to do that. In the report, some information is provided there in terms of how that process is managed. But now that councillor King is classified as what's called a prospective candidate and he must apply for leave of absence no later than the date of his nomination to the Australian Electoral Commission. Of course, the election date is not known, so that date is not yet known. But any time up to there, he can apply for leave. He's indicated to me that he'd like a leave of absence on the sixteenth of February. But I invite councillor King to give his own information to council, because this is his opportunity to do so.
Councillor King, I anticipate you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Miss Carver. Well, I wasn't prepared to to speak, I guess, because I actually thought I'd have to leave the room for 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 this matter. But yes, I have been pre selected for the United Australia Party for the coming election, which most likely will be held sometime before the twenty first of May twenty twenty two. So the next three months are going to be incredibly busy. So yeah, as per the the report, I'm seeking a leave of absence commencing after, effectively tomorrow after this meeting to commence and undertake my campaign.
Thank you. Are there any questions councillors?
Yeah, there is. We've got a leave of absence from the sixteenth. When does it go to?
That's a question.
Something that we should notice, councillors, is the actual election. So obviously, the leave of absence finishes at the time of the election. Should councillor King be elected, he is obliged to resign. He can't take part in both local government and any other level of government. So the leave of absence is to the period of the election. Given the election date is not known, we weren't able to indicate what that date is.
Can we, to give you a, bring in the motion.
Are there any other questions councillors? No? Would you like to move a motion?
I'm happy to move the motion, but including the second one, leave of absence from the sixteenth of February until the election is declared. And that gives us whatever, until declared, until a candidate is cleared or whatever.
Okay, I'll just ask a question, conflict of interest, like can councillor King actually vote on this? Give him a seat here about him. Our first idea was in the room to talk about it. There's not a conflict of interest to vote on in our motion.
Um well, look, the same issue would apply in terms of our next item, in terms of the application is for a leave of absence. Really, that's the only decision here and council has no ability other than to to grant a leave of absence. I think it's quite up to council whether they're happy for both and in the case of the next item. And councillor King in the case of this item, if they wish to abstain from voting in this case.
Is council happy to have?
It's procedural.
Yeah, I understand. I think in a par say about since we've selected, but that's.
Well, I only that he he was actually required to declare this at a council meeting, that's the. So it was a bit of a catch twenty two, he could do it from outside, but sorry, that that was my conflict in terms of suggesting whether or not he needed to be here. I believe he needed to declare it at the council meeting.
I'm happy enough to vote.
Yes, same, same. Okay.
I think under the local government's cap, I'd vote, give it more into it.
You need to vote, otherwise it's considered, abstaining is considered a vote against.
Okay.
So, yeah. Can I have a second for that motion, please councillors? Councillor McKay? Councillor McPhee, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just like to congratulate councillor King on standing for the federal election. I thought I was silly enough standing for council, but if you're silly enough to go that high, good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay.
No, thank you.
Would anybody, councillor Moore?
Yeah, look, anybody who wants to, has the fire in the belly, who wants to represent our community, should be congratulating them. Want to have a go, I think you, you know, good on you and have a go, Stewie. Um it's a it's a big step and if you do get elected, you know, you've got your work cut out for you. But no, good on you, you got the fire in the belly to do it and yeah, good on you.
Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, all in favor of this and just councillor King, all the best with his campaigning and I hope it gets the outcome that we want.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Would you like to close councillor McPhee?
Oh, well, obviously, the being silly was a very tongue in cheek remark. I think it's important that the community do have a choice at any election. So I do congratulate councillor King for putting his end up. Thank you.
With that, we will put it to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. And the next item.
It's procedural. We've had a written application from councillor Ian Young to take some leave on the seventeenth of February to the third of March, so that's brought to council's attention. That's recommended that council approve that leave.
Any questions councillors? Have a motion then? Thank you. As per recommendation, second up please councillor Moore. Do you wish to speak?
No.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor? unanimously.
So you've had a page on the recommendation, it's the twelfth in the recommendation.
Oh, you've got the twelfth, it's twenty seventeen. Yeah, time travel. Section C, decisions which need clarification, C twenty two point one, sign and seal report.
The register is there for council's information. It asks that council note the actions of signing and sealing the documents under delegation as shown.
Any questions?
Oh, very good.
Thank you. Second up councillor McPhee, all those in favor? Thank you. C twenty two point two councillor assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items.
Oh, maybe that's.
Just before you move that, Mayor, on the eighteenth, I was actually in attendance on that meeting, apologies.
Eighteenth of January.
Eighteenth of January.
Apologies councillor McPhee. We'll correct that, change that.
You can't change it. That will be amended. Councillor Jeffrey moved.
I'll move with that.
Thank you. Second up councillor McPhee, all those in favor? Thank you. Section D, notices of motion. Councillor Moore, you have a motion.
Thank you. Yes, I'd move that council right to the state government requesting that the full costs of setting up for the glass collection be covered by the state government, given that the container deposit scheme has been introduced by them in twenty twenty three. And they're requesting that an early adopters of the glass collection scheme also have their costs reimbursed.
Do we have a second for this motion? Councillor McPhee.
Uh question. Who who is currently identified to pay for the council, state councils or private?
Uh councils, yeah.
So we have a second. Councillor Moore, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. And as in the preamble, and as your representative of my, of my, of my Mallie Waste Resource Recovery Group, which advocates on matters of waste and recycles within our municipality. This motion came out of a meeting late last year in terms of what is, how are we going to fund this transition? And it appears that that will be quite costly as we go with the four billion scheme. So I'll just read the rest of the preamble. As we transition to a more circular economy in this area, the separation of glass as a separate recycling stream will occur over the next several years. This will occur in a number of possible ways, one of which is the container deposit scheme to be implemented by the state government in twenty twenty three. And the others involve either curbside collection or central drop off points, which will be administered through council's waste management services. This initiative will come at a cost. Given the inherent financial pressure rural and remote municipalities have due to the lack of competition, long distances and lower income levels. This additional burden will be difficult to absorb by council and the rate payers. The ability to absorb such extra costs needs to be considered when designing reimbursement or funding models to enable council to fulfill Victorian state government's policy objectives. In order to minimize this cost of this transition, the rate payers, we are, transition to rate payers. We ask that all transitional costs be funded by the state government. Now, bear in mind councillors, we're a municipality of over six thousand square kilometers. And currently, as it's determined by the state government, we will need to provide glass collection services over that entire six thousand square kilometers. So whether that means we're going to have trucks going up and down every road in the Mallie to collect remote glass collections or whether we have central drop off points, still an unknown at this point, but it is going to come at significant cost. That is an operational thing, which Miss Pecova might be able to enlighten us if you need to ask any questions. But we certainly don't want to be out of pocket. Costs of waste management are going to go up anyway, we just don't want them to go up more because our waste management services are on cost recovery basis. So we just, we need the state government to to back us every inch of the way to get this recycling system and and the circular economy, which, you know, it's our part in the circular economy here. Just, we don't want the burden to fall entirely on certainly rural and remote areas, far, much different here than it is in the city where there's a collection point every twenty meters in a city street, very efficient operation. But we are very remote and we have sparse areas to cover to actually fulfill this objective. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions councillors? Councillor King.
Just a simple one, I hope it's fairly simple. So the revenue from the container deposit scheme, so I'm assuming that's the container deposit scheme is similar to what happens in, for example, South Australia at the moment, where you get ten cents. where you get ten cents a bottle or five cents a can or something like that, is that, is that correct?
Well, the principle may be, but who runs it may not be.
Yep, so is, is the revenue from that then likely to go to state government?
Mr. Kovac, it's operational, so, yeah, Mr. Kovac on that.
Apart from the profit, yep, it, it goes to, um, state government, apart from the profit that the operators of the scheme will generate from running the scheme.
Yeah, so I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is effectively what you're saying is that the revenue from the contain, some of the revenue from the container deposit scheme will go straight into state government coffers, but at this point in time, they're not funding the, um, councils to actually, for, for, for council's part of the scheme.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, that's really, that's probably making a point as opposed to, um, asking a question, but I just need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? No? Councillor McPhee, did you need to speak to your?
Yeah, just quickly.
Yep.
Um, look, uh, recycling, recycling is becoming a bigger and bigger issue right across the world. Um, I think it's a great thing of the way the state government is going down this line. I think it's great the way we are recycling rubbish because we've got to look after our landfills. We can't just keep putting rubbish in the tips and put dirt on top of them. We've got to look at reusing all our stuff. Um, but in saying that, the state government shouldn't be cost shifting again on the local government. Once again, if the state government want to do this, let them pay it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Councillor Moore, would you like to close?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Yes, as, as we, uh, take our place, uh, in, in the world, um, and as councillor McPhee said, cost shifting again, you'll be very aware of that happening. Um, it was said at the LGA conference by a learned gentleman up on stage that the best way to, uh, encourage, um, the circular economy and recycling was to just make landfill dearer and dearer. And we've already seen that happening with a ninety percent increase in landfill levies, uh, which we're currently instituting. Um, so that's the plan. If we, if we don't adopt this, uh, successfully in our constitutional state, our landfill levies are going to just keep going up and up and up until the point that people, and of course, that gets passed directly on to consumers of waste management services, which is everybody in this room and all everybody listening and all our rate payers. Uh, it will just become to the point where it would be just cost by every even force people to do it. So let's just get this system in, but make sure that it actually costs our rate payers the least amount that it possibly can. And, uh, then we get, everybody gets in sync and, and does the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? Past unanimous. Section E, foreshadowed items, which we have none.
None.
Section F, urgent items not included in the agenda.
Um, yes, um, Mayor Jade, we do have one item here. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the, um, the restrictions around bringing urgent business to council. Um, I, I believe there was, uh, little, little choice or no choice in this case. So it's an item, um, regarding building better regions, funding round six, uh, which actually closed late last week, um, I think it was Friday. So the timing was a little bit, um, unfortunate. Uh, so we had to get the application in. Uh, there is a matter there in terms of, um, the actual budget and, um, being able to confirm absolutely that the funds are available in the years required. Um, and to do that requires a slight shift in some of our, um, part of our major, major pro, projects, uh, programme. Uh, the meeting, um, today was the nearest opportunity from, from that date to actually bring it to council's attention. And I think we have complied with, um, with the, at least most of the urgent business criteria. Um, perhaps arguable about whether it relates to or arises out of a matter that has arisen since the distribution of the agenda. We'd certainly talked to councillors about the elements of this programme, uh, and I guess the oversight, um, to some extent was just in where some of those programme funds were sitting in the major projects budget. Having discovered that after the agenda went out last, late last week, uh, I took the decision that, um, that we'd bring it to council on this occasion. Uh, it is possible if council would prefer to call a special meeting to consider it separately, but this seemed to be the most efficient, given the, um, the situation. So I'm, I'd ask, uh, councillors to consider, um, considering this, uh, urgent item of business, which, um, it is a great application, um, it leverages off, um, a contribution from council of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to end up with potentially a seven point seven million dollar project in Robben Vale. Uh, and I think the, um, the sooner that we can provide the assurance from a council resolution that the funds are available in the correct years, um, the, the better placed we are. Although there's no guarantee of success.
Can I have a motion to accept this as urgent business, councillors?
I'll have it, I'll move it, yes, that's it.
Councillor Jeffrey, can I have a second up? No second up?
Can I ask, sorry, I missed asking a question.
No?
When is the last date for the, the application for this funding?
Um, in fact, the application has gone in on a basis.
Yes.
That, um, the, the confirmation of these funds through a resolution of council would be imminent. That was my intent in signing the application last week.
Mm-hmm. Councillor Moore, you have a question?
I don't know, I just like to, um, move to suspend standing orders so we can have a discussion on whether this is or isn't, um, urgent business and what our options are.
Mm-hmm. Can I have a second to suspend standing orders?
Oh, second.
Councillor Young, all those in favour?
I'm against. Would you like to? We just moved a, a, um, transparency policy, councillors, we're suspending standing orders to have a debate. The debate should be at the motion. I'm happy to second the initial motion for the purpose of debate. It should be in an open council meeting.
Um.
But we're still.
We're still, we're not going in camera.
Yeah, we're not going in camera. We're just, we've just suspended to have discussion, um, similar to when the bridge debate came up.
Yeah. Um.
So.
So that was passed?
Can I just ask the question? Um, if it's not considered urgent, our option then, is our option then to have a special meeting within twenty-four hours with twenty-four hours' notice and, uh, consider this as, as the only item on the agenda?
Well, it, it will need to be considered, um, the, the actual timing, I recommend it be as soon as possible.
Yeah.
I, and this is just my judgement, um, it, I, I would not like to leave it another month.
No.
Because, um, the funding body may, may then choose to, to ask for information that we can't provide in terms of a council resolution at this point.
Okay, so we could miss the boat. So in terms, in terms of what our options are, we can accept it as urgent business and do it now, or we just, we just say it's not and then we come back in two or three days' time and then discuss it as a separate item. So there are our options at this point to get it over the line in time. Okay. Just like to clarify that. So it's one or the other.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's two, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Councillor McKay?
Uh, in view of, I, I'm, I'm very transparent. I'm happy to be transparent, but also I like to discuss things thoroughly. I don't see a problem with us discussing it in camera so that we all feel clear about it, then coming out into the open and just, and having a debate about it. Because then it would achieve us bringing this to a meeting without having to come back to another meeting. It may, for whatever reason, uh, be in a special way deemed urgent, but it will allow us to deal with the matter today. And I don't think discussing it in camera is hiding anything from the public. It just means that we get to have a more casual conversation. We draw out the information and then bring it out. It's not in any way trying to be not transparent. So I would, I'm suggesting that we achieve it all today.
So, did you want to move a motion?
I moved that we go into camera and have a discussion about this, this item and then come back out of camera and debate it fully.
Yes, you'd have to.
Well, we'd have to resume standing orders first.
Standing orders first.
Which is what I had to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, move that we resume standing orders.
Okay, I have a second to resume standing orders.
Yeah, that's right.
Councillor King? All those in favour? To resume standing orders? Thank you. Councillor McKay?
I move a motion that we go into camera to have a, an assembly-like discussion of this item and then come out of camera and debate the issue.
I have a second up for councillor McKay's motion to go in camera.
Awesome.
Councillor Young? Did you want to speak to the motion to go in camera?
Um, yes, I'll be honest, I was at work last night until ten. I didn't have time to thoroughly digest this item and I would like to appreciate the opportunity to talk about it and then bring it to this meeting and deal with it.
Councillor Young?
I'd agree with that. I'd like a little bit more time to, and discussion around this issue.
Okay. All those in favour?
I'll speak against it.
Speak against.
So, I understand if councillors, if I'm talking into camera, they're still going to come out and talk to it as urgent. So it's either urgent or it's not. If councillors need more time to digest what is in the report and the impacts on our ten year financial plan and the budget they put forward, then don't throw it as urgent and we'll come back in a couple of days and the council's about time to do it. That's on against going in camera because it's just like, we're not going to get to it right into.
Okay. Any other speakers for or against the motion? Councillor McPhee?
I'm against going into camera. Miss Mayor, all we're asking at this first moment is nothing about the report. I'm happy with the report. All we're asking is, is it urgent business? Once we decide it's urgent business, then we can have a discussion if we know to, once the report is up.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the question we're being asked at the initial stage is, is this urgent business? That's the first question, that's the only question. We've got nothing to do with the report at this point in time. Thank you.
Any other speakers for or against the motion? Councillor McKay, would you like to close?
No.
Then we'll put it to a vote. Those in favour of moving in camera? Those against going in camera? The motion is lost.
I move a motion to accept it as urgent business.
Thank you, councillor McKay, second up. Councillor Jeffrey? Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor McKay?
Um, I accept the explanation from our C, acting CEO and am happy to consider the, um, motion.
Thank you. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I understand that there's, you know, there's parameters around what is urgent business and this is probably the prices that we've had to in terms of supply and application, uh, and, uh, impacts on our ten year major project plan, but I'll be with all, considering today's urgent business.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion, councillor McPhee?
Thanks, Miss Mayor. If you look at our governance rules, councillors, under six point four, urgent business, it must be by resolution of council, only if the matter does not commit council, this is part A, does not commit council to significant expenditure not included in the adopted budget. This doesn't. Part B, it relates to or arises out of a matter which has risen since distribution of the agenda. We've known about this for months, councillors. We can't just bend our governance rules just because it's our convenience. We can't use it one way or the other. We've got to stick to our governance rules. I've done this before in relation to a bridge motion that was put up. I'm not saying I'm against the, um, report. Actually, I'm in favour of the report, but that's not the issue. We've got a governance rule here, we've got to stick by it and we've got to stand by it. We can't just apply it and make it malleable to what we want it to work for. It's not about that. There's governance rules set in place for that, for us to be transparent. That's what they're all about. We've got rules there that says this is not urgent business and that's why I say it shouldn't be accepted. If it means coming along to a special council meeting in our next assembly, so be it. Let's do it. It's going to be one item on our next council assembly, make it a special council meeting. Not issued with that at all, but let's go by our procedures, don't change them to suit the topic just because it suits us. If another report comes along at a later time, it doesn't suit us, we're going to rely on this to knock it back. We've got to rely on that at all times, not where it just suits us. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any other speakers against the motion?
Can I just ask the question again? Can I just ask councillor McPhee to repeat that line about the budget? Because I, I didn't have my.
I'll read the whole six point four, urgent business. One, subsection one, if the agenda for a meeting makes provision for urgent business, which it does, business cannot be admitted as urgent business other than by resolution of council and only then if the matter does not, one, substantially affect the levels of council service, two, commit council to significant expenditure not included in the adopted budget. We're not talking about ten year major project then, we're talking about the adopted budget. Three, establish or amend council policy. Four, commit council to any contractual arrangement. B, it relates to or arises out of a matter which has arisen since distribution of the agenda and referring the item until the next meeting or made a decision of the item will not have any effect on the matter. Or the item involves a matter of urgency as determined by the CEO and, but you've got to remember there's an and in that. It's risen since the last thing, it all ends. Not, they're not done in their own. And it cannot be addressed through an operational service request. A councillor proposing a matter to be as urgent business, so a councillor, it seems to be, can raise urgent business, must lodge it in writing with the CEO no later than ten AM on the day of the meeting. The chief executive officer or advisor mayor or any other matter determined appropriate for the council to consider admitting as urgent business. So we've been reading subsection two, a councillor raises urgent business, not the staff.
Does that answer your question, councillor Moore?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers against the motion?
Who was, who had moved it?
I moved it.
Councillor McKay, did you want to close?
No.
We'll put it to a vote then. All those in favour of accepting this as urgent business? All those in favour? Sorry, all those against? Motion is lost. Okay. That mo, motion lapses. Perhaps expect a special council meeting in the coming days. Section G, to consider an order on councillor reports. Who's going to go first? Councillor King?
Well, thank you. Uh, I had to duck back through my calendar because it seems like a long time since we, we last did this. Um, and obviously during January was a fairly quiet time. So a couple of things to report, uh, last week, the Swan Hill Motorplex meeting, a lot of discussion following up from the December meeting, uh, regarding funding opportunities, um, the government appetite for funding motorsports, um, at the moment. So, uh, expect a bit of flavour from that, that group to, um, to hopefully push council towards some more funding opportunities. And, um, of course, on Sunday night, attending the opening of Country Week tennis, which is a massive event for, for Swan Hill. Uh, I think there was over six hundred meals served on, on Sunday night, um, which is just extraordinary, um, out there. Uh, they do a wonderful job, um, the, the tennis club, um, and it was great to be part of that event.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I just did a couple of things. I've, um, attached it, it'll be on the, um, minutes when I go back.
Terrific. Councillor McKay?
Um, attended NIA District Action Group, uh, initial, uh, first meeting for the year, Boundary Ben Progress Association, Robben Vale Improvement Group meeting and Country Week Tennis opening night dinner, which was wonderful.
Thank you. Councillor Young?
Um, I had three things that I went to and I can't remember what they all were, but.
They're on the screen.
Sitting on the screen. Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, that's what I went to.
Councillor Jeffrey?
Nothing to report.
Councillor Moore?
Um, pretty quiet again, um, it's the last meeting in December. Um, we did the Robben Vale Housing Meeting, which was really a photo opportunity for, uh, early cover and, uh, I think Miss Green, was it, up there? Um, which was, um, um, I was proud to see the houses going up there, um, and, uh, Ronald Street Project. Um, uh, Swan Hill Australia Day Event at the Town Hall, um, Lake Voga Australia Day Event, which was fantastic out there at the lake. They really do a great job, the Lions Club out there. And, uh, of course, Country Week Tennis, uh, opening, which was a really great event and as councillor King said, apparently over six hundred meals. And by the way, uh, I don't know who won the raffle.
Oh.
I had a handful of tickets. I stayed, I hung around. I left, they still hadn't drawn the draw, so there wasn't going to be many people left to win the raffle, but anyway. That's it, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. And my, I have had an incredibly busy end of, uh, January and February. You can read all the highlights. Uh, the highlight, I think, was Australia Day, citizenship ceremonies and breakfast at Manangatang, the student achievement awards. Um, and the Village Whale workshops are another highlight as well, that, um, is something to look forward to. And the M A V rules review workshop, which were Zoom, but, um, lots there and you can read them in the minutes. Okay. No in-camera items for section H, there being no further business. Declare the meeting closed at. No in-camera items for section H, there being no further business, declare the meeting closed at three forty-one PM. Thank you, councillors and directors. And Miss Carter?